Good evening, I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you'll please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Good evening everyone, let us pray. Our Father who art in heaven, once again we assemble ourselves in the seat of government, Cartersville, Georgia, to do the business of the city. We ask for wisdom, guidance, understanding, and clarity of the subjects presented tonight. Come down and be in the midst, and we'll be so grateful. It's in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united by God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Drake, the roll please.
Carrie Fies, Ward 1, here. Dave Stemp, Ward 2.
Here.
Carrie Roth, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Coolen, Ward 4.
Here.
Carrie Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Melissa Cornell, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you Julie, first order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from March 20th, and council you've had an opportunity to look these minutes over for at least a few days, and now would be a time to make any changes or adjustments to those if you see any are needed, and if not, a motion to approve is in order.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We are recognizing Autism Awareness Month here tonight at council, and we'll hear from some folks from that organization here in just a minute, but I do want to read this proclamation where it says, Boost Abilities LLC, a local autism support group is dedicated to raising awareness about the importance of safety, support, and inclusion for families affected by autism. Autism Spectrum Disorder, ASD, affects a significant portion of our youth with 1 in 36 children diagnosed, making their well-being and success vital to the future of our city. Whereas a community that actively learns about autism fosters greater understanding, acceptance, and inclusion of individuals on the spectrum, while also providing parents, caregivers, and professionals with meaningful connections, encouragement, and emotional support. Raising awareness about the complexities of autism through education, shared experiences, resources, and community events strengthens our city's ability to support families navigating this journey. Whereas ensuring access to appropriate accommodation, services, and inclusive interactions among parents, educators, professionals, and community members helps create a more supportive and compassionate society for individuals with autism. Now therefore, I'm Matthew J. Santini, Mayor of the City of Cartersville, do hereby proclaim April 5th of 2025 as Bartow County Autism Awareness Day in Cartersville, Georgia, and encourage all citizens, community organizations, elected officials, educators, and local businesses to join in the efforts to support and uplift families impacted by autism in our city. We are delighted tonight, I was trying to remember Boost Abilities, Mandy Beavers, and other representatives, her family and other representatives, I'll ask them to come forward and receive this proclamation.
Good, how are you? So you just... Do I get to keep this?
Yeah, this is, let's get this for free. What am I trying to do?
Come on, you're gonna take a picture, come on up, Andy. You want to stand in the middle?
No, I'm gonna stand right there.
Stand by, create the one. You wanna come over here?
I'm on your...
Stand with, you stand there. You will? Okay, Grayson, you want to stay here?
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Very good.
Alright, let me get one with their phone first. One, two. Alright, one, two.
Wonderful. Thank y'all for being here.
Thank you. Steven, say thank you to Mary.
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
I'm Andy Morgan, I'm the CEO of the Insane ADA, we're a little bit near Cartersville, and we provide therapeutic services to children with autism. So we've been in Cartersville for about five or six years now, and we serve probably hundreds of families with children who have special needs. Cartersville is a wonderful community, and we're super excited to help Mandy with her cause, with Boost Abilities. We think it's very important that communities are involved in autism, it affects a lot of families. It's a long-term journey, the unfortunate part is there's no cure for autism. So how do we deal with it? We need to teach everybody in the community, whether it's law enforcement, whether it's religious organizations, educational organizations, and small businesses, how to help communicate with children and adults on the spectrum. And we're very proud, you know, to be a part of Boost Abilities and help them and encourage them and support them for things like Mandy's put together a 5K race here in Cartersville Saturday morning. And how many runners do you have now, over 200?
Yeah, 237, the last I checked was like 40 of them.
That's incredible, I mean, it goes to say how great Cartersville is, and how involved the communities are and everything else. So it does give me great pleasure to be here tonight and to be a part of the community, and I thank everybody for their service as well. Thank you.
Thank y'all for being here.
I'll be brief. I'm Grayson Oswald Smith, I'm an attorney here in Cartersville. I have had the opportunity to work with Caleb extensively in the past few months, having to do with what's given rise to the nonprofit that we've created. I just want to say that I really do appreciate the council making this an official proclamation. I think it's very important for mental health and for autism awareness to be throughout the community. And it's good here, seeing as attorney, I can guarantee you, based on the work that I've been able to do with Caleb, that not only that all the community, but also the legal community has been aware, has brought more focus to that. So I just want to thank y'all, and I want to say it's been a great privilege working with their family.
Thank you.
I will say just one thing, sorry, I promised I wasn't gonna talk, but my main goal is for everyone to really recognize that kids do not outgrow autism. He's 26 years old, he is now an adult with autism, so now what we're looking at in our community is many children who are even in every school system here now, Bartow County has a self-contained autism room, they are becoming adults here, right here, in our town, in our city. We have to be ready for that, because the incident that, you know, unfortunately involved us with my son, we weren't ready for it. So that is the whole grounds for Boost Abilities, which means let's focus on boosting their abilities, there's so much these babies are capable of, we just have to look outside the box, think, you know, beyond our, what we call normal, which is not a word that I even like using. So it's, it's exciting for me now, and honestly, I really feel like I should have done this maybe 10 years ago, but we're in the moment now, and I just love, I thank y'all for your support very much. And he does work at Kroger, so if you ever in Kroger, give him a big high five, he loves the attention.
Thank y'all, thank y'all for being here.
Also, I'm a YouTuber of Bartow County, Georgia 11, I do responding Mercy Vehicles incidents, it's on Facebook and YouTube, so I work hard, and Chief Ryan McCann, I know you because you're my police chief of my hometown of Cartersville, I do around Georgia, and I worked hard for this, and my YouTube channel is Bartow County, Georgia 11, I do it at destination, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Better commercial minute than that guy that stands up for three minutes every now and then minute? That's great. Alright, let's move on from there, we have some appointments, Mr. Porter, why don't you get us moving along with that?
Yes, mayor, the first one, Carterville Authority, myself, Walter Mahoney, Mike Field, wish to continue to say on that board to approve the term of expire January 6, 2030.
Chair, will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, next item please.
Charlie Milner, which continues to serve on the Edwah Housing, Edwah Area Housing Authority, and has approved his term of expire, April 1, 2030.
Thank you, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We have got a few second readings of ordinances, T-25-02, Mr. Manino, if you will get us started with that.
Thank you, Mayor and council, this is a proposed sign ordinance amendment to add Marketplace Boulevard to the list of roads where digital signs are allowed. There have been no additions or changes since the first reading, Planning Commission did recommend approval, and the applicant is available if you had any questions.
Thank you, any questions for Randy at this time? Thank you, I'll open up a public hearing for T-25-02 and ask anybody wishing to step forward to speak for or against to do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for T-25-02, turn it over to council for any further discussion and consideration.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Mr. Porter, regarding one-way streets.
Yes, mayor, this ordinance if it passed would be to make a one-way street next to Young Brothers and Railroad. If you go back that way, you can see on the diagram, Logan's app pulled up, basically you make one-way alley there, that's, we see diagonal parking already, but we have people coming back the other way, and just has caused accidents in the past, we're just trying to make that a little more safer for our residents, and also anybody walking back that way, so recommend your approval of this ordinance.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this item? If there's none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And our next item is an update to the downtown entertainment zone ordinance.
Yes, before y'all go into this item, I want y'all to know, based upon y'all's last meetings and discussions, we're proposing the following amended amendments to the version y'all had at first reading. We'll basically add a paragraph B, which will deal with the triangle piece of property there, which will basically say that upon the issuance of a CO for that particular property, that will then be added to the downtown entertainment zone and the adjacent streets. Then we'll add a paragraph C, which will be the property right next to it, upon a CO to the property at the front there being issued, that, or I should say, along Leek Street, 21 Leek Street, that parcel, that whole tract there will be added to the downtown entertainment zone. Then we'll be adding a paragraph D, which basically will be upon a CO being issued by, where the Red Barn is, that whole portion there will be added to the downtown entertainment zone. And we'll put a sunset provision in there, that if they're not completed by December 31st, 2028, those allowances will go away. With that being said, I'll let Ms. Reeve address the need for it, and, oh, she's already left, okay, sorry.
Alright, you said it all.
Oh, well, thank you.
There you go. And, so, so a motion, would, would it need to make note of those changes that you made?
Yes, to motion it as amended.
Okay.
Prove as amended.
Is there, is there any discussion on this item? If there's none, a motion is in order.
Like to motion, make a motion as to approve the ordinance as amended.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to first reading of ordinance. Actually, David, before you start, Chair is going to entertain a motion to add five items to the agenda tonight, please?
Motion to add five items.
Alright, so, so I've got a motion by Councilwoman Hodge, and a second by Councilman Fox, all in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, there's five items added. Good evening, David.
How are you? Good. Good evening, Mayor and council, City of Cartersville is amending its code of ordinances to add a new section under Section 15-13, non-resident fees. This update introduces non-resident fees for the senior aquatic facility with rates for daily, quarterly, semi-annual, and annual passes.
Okay, are there questions about this item? Okay, we, this is the first reading of the ordinance, and we will take this up for consideration at our second meeting in April, which is?
Seventeenth.
The 17th, thank you. I don't know why I don't write that down every single time. Alright, so David, you've got another item here, Turf Tracer 48-inch.
Sure. Parks and Recreation Department requests approval to purchase a turf tracer, turf tracer, 48-inch walk-behind mower from Taylor Outdoor Power Equipment for $7,731.99. This mower is essential for maintaining areas inaccessible to zero-turn mowers. The purchase is a budgeted item and is recommended for approval.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Chemical control system.
Okay, Parks and Recreation is seeking approval to purchase a chemical control system for the Dellinger Park pool. This will upgrade the current system to provide better monitoring and distribution of the chemicals for the pool. We received quotes for the Prominent DMC 513 controller. Aquatic consulting and equipment had the lowest quote at $8,385. This includes $900 for installation, and training, and $125 for shipping. This is also a budgeted item and is recommended for approval.
Thank you, questions for David on this item? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Mr. Greer, you are up next. And we'll take the two that are on the main agenda, and we'll take the added item that involves you after that, okay?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Wait, which one's first? Oh, there it is.
Let me help you with that. Fiber installation of the soccer complex.
This is the, this item is for the construction and installation of a fiber pathway to be built to the Cartersville Soccer Complex located at 152 Milner Road by the middle school. This is gonna be used for security cameras and Wi-Fi. Total amount is $20,935 from NCI. This is a budgeted item, and we recommend this for your approval.
Thank you, question, go ahead.
Question.
Yeah.
Does the, does the school, like the bus farm facility, or the school use city fiber?
Yes, we serve all of their locations, and we just got their internet bid a few weeks ago.
Okay, so we have, we have some facilities up there, or?
We do, we're not too far away, and mostly the charge is from boring underground.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Network monitoring software.
Yeah, this is, this item is the request to purchase new network monitoring and performance management software from Path Solutions for $18,490.57. This is what we use to monitor bandwidth for city departments, Fibrocom customers. This is not a budgeted item, but 2020 SPOST funds are available, and we recommend this for your approval.
Thank you, questions on this item? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and then there was an item that we just added to the agenda just moments ago, city firewall replacement.
Yep, this is for the purchase of two new firewalls. This will be used to protect the city departments. Total amount is $71,400 from Blue Ally. This is not a budgeted item, but will be funded with the 2020 SPOST, with 90% of the total to be reimbursed by the state and local government cyber security grant program awarded to Fibrocom in 2022, and we recommend this for your approval.
Thank you, questions on this item? A motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Stephen. Mr. Dixon, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor and council. The gas system is requesting the purchase of two regulators and one relief valve for the occult metering station. Sole source provider of this type of equipment is Bartlett Controls of Waxah, North Carolina. They provided a quote totaling $19,272.10. This is a budgeted item, and council's approval to accept the quote is recommended.
Thank you, questions for Mr. Dixon on this one? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Michael.
Yes, sir, this is also for the occult metering station, it's a 6-inch turbine meter. We received two quotes from, uh, two...
Two vendors?
Yeah, two, that's the word. The lowest quote was provided by Dev Tech Sales of Avon Park, Florida. They provided a quote of $8,000, it's a budgeted item, and council's approval to accept this quote is recommended.
Thank you, questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Last item for you, sir.
This is also for that metering station for the occult. This is a 4-inch filter. We received two quotes for the filter, and Bartlett Controls was also the lowest quote of $8,170, it's a budgeted item.
Thank you, questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chief McCann, you're up next, sir.
Good evening. This is a request to purchase six vehicles, five police package, 2025 Chevrolet Silverado, and one 3/4-ton 2025 Chevrolet pickup truck. The 3/4-ton is going, pickup truck is gonna be used to pull our command trailer, which we use for special events around the city periodically. However, our training officer will be driving that truck daily. The total cost of the vehicles is basically not exceed of $412,379,000. These vehicles will be purchased from Wilson County Motors in Lebanon, Tennessee. These are actually fiscal year '25-'26 vehicles. I spoke with the city manager, these vehicles are on the ground right now, we can have them next week, and the city manager approved me bringing them before the council now.
Great. Any questions?
So, these are all pickup trucks, is that right?
They are, they are.
Do you find them useful?
Very useful. We've got eight already, and they've come in handy, and especially for special events and that sort of thing. We haul a lot of barricades and all kind of different stuff, but the police officers that are assigned them, love them. And, you know, this is a portion of the 2025-'26 vehicles, and, so the rest of them won't be ready until September of this year, so.
In addition to the barricades and stuff, do y'all also have that trailer, a couple little trailer, the speed camera trailers we got?
We do, we use them all the time, and haul them around at different locations, so it comes, comes in handy.
Very good, any other questions or discussion? If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the purchase.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Morgan, you've got a couple on the docket and a couple of the added items, we'll knock those out for you.
Yes, sir, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. The first item is a contract with Geo Hydro for the, for the new firing range that we're moving forward with. They need to do some subsurface exploration for retaining wall, and then also we'll be having them move forward with the MPDS compliance testing. We're asking for approval for this contract in the amount of $10,700 with Geo Hydro.
Okay, thank you, questions for Mr. Morgan on this? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Freddie.
Yes, this is the subsurface exploration for the new city hall building. It is also with Geo Hydro engineers, it'll be, they've assigned at least six or eight boring sections in the amount of $11,900.
Thank you, questions on this item, or if not, a motion's in order?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Now on the added items, we have an item pertaining to cleaning services for the depot restroom.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, in anticipation of opening those restrooms in the next couple of weeks, we wanted to bring forward a contract to have those cleaned. We got a monthly services contract from All Clean Janitorial LLC in the amount of $758.34. That'll be cleaning the two restrooms, we anticipate being open during the week, and then the five on the weekend. We're asking approval for that.
Okay, thank you for that, any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And the next one is the guaranteed maximum price for the train depot renovation.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, we want to bring this back to you. That amount that we got from Penn and Construction is in the amount of $491,903.18. It'll allow us to finish the third floor and everything else in the depot and have the renovation completely done. Really pleased with the work, and really pleased with our end result. We should be done within two weeks, April 15th is when they'll have them back in, they're finishing floors and painting.
Outstanding, any discussion?
Just, Mayor, as you mentioned, I get basically, or Mayor and council, this is the entire renovation, everyone's in the building, the air conditioning units were older, we just said, let's modify everything, let's fix it up, so we don't have to come back in five, you know, a couple years from now and do that. We even did the bricks outside.
Yes. And they've got a masonry seal that we're doing on that, and we're gonna do that also at the 1898 corridor, the history center. Additionally, we fixed windows upstairs that were leaking, that we didn't think had ever been sealed. It is a total renovation, and it turned out really well.
And there's molding on the second floor, I think there's...
Mold on the first and second floor, we did termite treatment again on that and sealed that, refinished all of the flooring on the first, second, and third floor, it looks really well.
I'll point out Dan's comment after work session, when you, I want to thank you for your diligence on this, and Ron Goss as well, but, you know, council, you'll remember when we started looking at downtown bathrooms, we were gonna put a building out here, it was gonna cost us $650,000. As Dan pointed out to me after the work session, it's like, look what we've got now, the entire, entirety of the building for significantly less than that, so.
Yes.
Fine work by all.
Thank you. Any other discussion or glad handing we'd like to do ourselves, or there's a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
You have one more, Fred, no, you don't, that's it for you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're done. Mr. McKee, you're up next.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. The electric department requests approval of an electrical interconnection and power exchange agreement between the city and Piana Non-Wovens. This is for a system, a solar system installed in the customer's facility located at 101 Old Mill Road.
Thank you, any questions about this item? And if there's none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you, Tom. Dan, you've got the next item, the agreement with the CVB.
Yes, Mayor, as you just approved the depot renovation, CVB, we're waiting, holding off till when the renovation's done to allow them to move in, they're looking at May, they're getting started, they do want to do some interior stuff to add to the inside of the building, but this is agreed to allow them to use that space, they will operate the visitor center for us, they will actually be open on Saturdays, more hours, and then we were able to do provide before, but I recommend approval of this agreement with the CVB.
Thank you, any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and then the agreement with the DDA.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there's actually two agreements I recommend for approval. The first one is one that's been in effect for several years, where the depot basically uses that space over there, we're modifying the use of that agreement, obviously for the CVB to use that space as well. And then the second agreement is the funding for the current fiscal year. The receptionist that was handling the visitor center retired last August, and then we closed down the facility for a number of months for the renovation. So my recommendation is to reduce the amount that we're funding them from $220,000 all this fiscal year, for the DDA, to $190,000. It's a reduction of $30,000 for this fiscal year, and they'll, they'll see that approved on their last payment, normally we pay them $55,000 per quarter, my recommendation of approval, we pay their last quarterly payment with $25,000, which gives them enough funding for the year to operate.
Okay, any questions or discussion on this item? If there's none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.[1739.12]
Second.
All in favor to Kate, but saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Mr. Forsyth, you're up, sir.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first item is the final reconciliation closeout change order for the Sludge Lagoon dredging project. That is finally complete. They removed 35,000 wet tons of sludge from that lagoon, and I would say if nothing were to change, that would last about 25 years. Of course, with the flows going up, that time shortens, but significant amount, and that's the first sludge that's ever been removed from there in over 50 years of operation. So. But anyway, back to my point. The final change order here represents a $183,305 credit on that project as it was completed under contract price.
Outstanding. I will say, you have checked many, many boxes since you've been here, but I would venture to say this is probably one that's probably amongst the most gratifying to have this one behind you.
All my boxes were not by my choosing.
[laughter] Are there any next two planned questions that go on now?
We only answer demand.
That's right. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, but saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And the next item for you, sir.
Yes, sir. This final item is the watershed protection monitoring. We're required to monitor streams in the watershed in the city of Cartersville. That's done every year. Rent Engineering has done that historically since this program has been started. They haven't changed the price on us, and this year is no different. $59,500. That is all the stream sampling, including reporting to the EPD for us. Recommend it for your approval. It is a budgeted item.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, but saying aye?
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. Go ahead.
I have one question.
Sure.
Or one option for Mr. Forsyth, or one question. So do you have any comments on the judgment coming out of Tennessee about the water wars? How that is beneficial to us?
From the DC Circuit Judge?
Yes.
The water wars? That's a win. That's 30 years or 40 years in the making now, almost. As I know, that is the last remaining challenge to the water reallocation in Lake Altoona for the city. Now, there's a lot of other stakeholders in that, but for the city of Cartersville, that is the last hurdle before we get a new reallocation into the lake, which the Corps has already issued a decision on that, whether we're waiting on this court case. So our request for reallocation and the new water storage contract with the Corps is in Corps of Engineers headquarters in DC, so that should... I don't know how fast they work. Well, I do know how fast they work. They don't. But this was the last remaining legal hurdle for the city to get additional reallocation in the lake.
Very good.
Great relief.
Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we go to the add, the final two added items. Mr. Porter, you have an item?
Yes, Mayor. We have received a guaranteed maximum price for a Bay construction who was doing the work at the Matthew Hill Park Stadium. Step improvements, and we had a ground breaking last week, and I recommend approval of this agreement for the mayor and city clerk to sign, and the total amount that they guaranteed the price would not exceed is $2,88,261.66.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this item?
May I say something, please?
Sure.
During this dedication, there weren't much hoopla. I didn't tell many people, possibly. I want to see some dirt move before I said anything. But Sunday night, sitting back watching the basketball games, Ms. Hill called me, and I could tell she was fooled and couldn't get it out, but she was so thankful that something was done to the park and everything. And like I told Dan earlier, during the ribbon cutting, Logan, I want to invite everybody that's possible so they'll know to come celebrate. I've been getting a loud clap. I'm glad it's happening, but you didn't tell me. I went there, I went there. I didn't know they wanted to be there, but now I know. And for the council and city government, we are so thankful and so appreciative. I'll just, if it's approved, and I'll make a motion for it.
I'm not ready for a motion yet. Because I'm going to defend you, because if they're throwing barbs at you for them not knowing, the city of Cartersville social media page put out something about that event. I'm pretty certain the newspaper had something on the event, and I'm even more certain at the radio station had something on that event. So come to back off and come see me if they got a problem with you.
Yeah, yeah.
So I do have a motion.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, but saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And the final item, if it couldn't get any better from that, Mr. Lovell, what do you have for us?
Mayor, we have a deed of dedication, which is the last step for the, in the city approval process for the new Olive Garden that is located here. It is recommended by staff for your approval.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, but saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. If I don't get to eat the ceremonial first meatball, there's going to be a problem.
I'll talk to the honor.
That's right. Is there any other business that needs to come forward, Council, tonight? If there's none, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Stay gold.